Welcome. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here to the 2010 State of the City Address. And at this time, I really would am honored to introduce Pastor Dave Johnson from First Lutheran Church here in Sioux Falls who will give the invocation. And then after the invocation, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, I'd ask everyone to please rise.
I always reserve the right to say a word or two. He's a big man because he knows I didn't vote for him. At the time, Bruce Halverson was running and we didn't think you were going to run. But you changed your mind and Emerson says that's okay. A foolish consistency is the Goblin of little minds. You have a big mind. And I personally want to thank you, Dave. I know this is your last State of the City address. Thank you for being forward-looking, a dreamer, but a practical man, very civil in your relationships. And on behalf of just anybody who feels the same as I do, thank you so much. Let's pray. Dear God, it is amazing how you can reach out and touch us right here in Sioux Falls. We have watched Sioux Falls grow in the inner city and outlying areas. We are reminded that we too are called upon to grow in our faith and service, pushing the boundaries sometimes beyond our comfort zone. We have gathered by the falls of the Sioux. We are reminded of your abundant grace as it comes tumbling into our lives in generous and beautiful ways. We have biked on the bike path by a gently flowing river and through beautiful parks. We are reminded of the serenity and peace and other sources of renewal which you provide as we journey through life. We have watched our city contend with those pesky potholes. Sometimes it seems the battle is lost, but you remind us to live in hope. There will be bumps in the road for all of us along life's journey, but there will be another time of smoother travels ahead with your help. We have lived and worked with neighbors of all stripes, all unique and all equally loved by you. You have begun to teach us that civility and mutual respect are the glue that binds a community together. These and many other lessons you have taught us and you have worked through those who have been our leaders. Thank you for all of them. Today especially, we are grateful for the leadership of Mayor Dave. He has demonstrated the qualities of servant leadership. His mission has been to make Sioux Falls a wonderful place in which to live and grow with your help and he and others have succeeded. Bless him and all of our leaders now and in the future in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me take a moment and to recognize our city council. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ken Anderson Jr., Gerald Benega, Vernon Brown, Pat Costello, Greg Jamison, Dee Knudsen, Bob Litz, and Kermit Staggers. And thank you very much for all you do. And I want to thank each and every one of you for being here today and for your ongoing support for our city. And I would like to really welcome those of you watching on Channel 16. This marks the first time ever that we have a live broadcast from the Orphelm Theater Center. And I hope that in the future, the city can use this great facility to broadcast other live events. When I first took office eight years ago, the Orphelm Theater was facing an uncertain future. If you had looked around here back then, you would have seen it in one of two ways. You would have either seen a place with great potential or you would have seen a place that had too many problems to be worth the effort. As you know, I saw this as a place that needed to be saved. And today, we sit in a theater that has been restored and will serve this city for years to come. Projects like this certainly aren't easy. They aren't always popular right away, but they are worth it. And in many ways, the story of this theater is the story of our city. In Sioux Falls, we succeed when we come together for the good of our city. We succeed when we set individual motivations aside and support a vision that puts the city first. There is not one single ingredient that makes a successful city. Instead, it is a combination of many factors. Strong basic services are important, but other quality of life features are too. So leadership becomes about seeking a balance among many needs and about working together. Only then does a city succeed. Late last year, a scientific survey of our residents showed that we are indeed succeeding. Ninety-two percent said that Sioux Falls is a good or excellent place to live. Ninety-two percent also said you're getting at least a fair value for your tax dollar. And for the seventh straight year, Forbes Magazine named Sioux Falls the best city its size for business and careers. This year, we will learn more about the growth of our city through the 2010 census. The last time the census was taken, our population was around 124,000 citizens. This time, we estimate it will be at least 157,000 people. That would be an increase of 33,000 residents. This alone would represent the third largest city in South Dakota. Since I took office, we have annexed 8,178 acres into our city. We have expanded our borders in every direction. Our new growth totals 12.8 square miles or a community with the same land area as Brookings, South Dakota. Our total size is now almost 74 square miles. This has been a decade of tremendous development for Sioux Falls. And with that growing population, we have seen an explosion in building. Since 2002, the value of building permits in Sioux Falls has exceeded $3.2 billion. Our major projects in that time represent a wide range of industries. We added several key health facilities. We welcomed ADP into our community. We expanded educational opportunities with the University Center and six new elementary schools. We also grew our neighborhoods and developed new ones. Since 2002, 6,946 new homes were built in Sioux Falls and 12,578 total units of housing were built. That includes apartments and a growing number of twin homes and townhomes. And if plans for development unfold this year, we will continue to grow our employment in Sioux Falls. In the last eight years, we have added 16,200 jobs to our city. We were also recently named one of the top five cities nationwide for job prospects this spring through the Manpower Employment Outlook Survey. We all know that 2009 was a difficult year for many individuals and businesses and cities suffered as a result. In Sioux Falls, we saw just under $300 million in construction valuation. We built 513 new homes. To give you a sense of how we compared, Rapid City had 117.5 million in construction and 153 new homes. Des Moines had 264 million in construction and 134 homes. And Lincoln, Nebraska, had $267 million in construction and 378 homes. We know that in our survey, that our residents support the direction the city is heading. Ninety-three percent say they would recommend living in Sioux Falls to someone who asked. And 89% plan to remain in Sioux Falls for the next five years. To make sure that our city continues to attract and keep residents, we completed our new long-range plan called Shape Sioux Falls. This will help guide our growth for the next 15 years and will focus on design standards that will enhance neighborhoods, gathering places, and transportation. Some of our most promising growth is seen on the east side. Several years ago, our new lift station opened up 23,000 acres for additional development. The first mile of South Dakota 100 is now completed and the second segment is under construction this year. In 2009, the first retail opened at Dolly Farm Village. This year, more retailers will join our second Target store along with a new movie theater and other development. I can't stress enough how much potential for growth there is on the east side and how important it is to continue construction of Highway 100. This 18-mile project must be completed. The impact it will have on the future of our city is enormous. In the last eight years, we have also seen tremendous growth on the west side. We now have more than 30,000 people living west of Interstate 29. In 2009, we expanded Sartoma Avenue to a five-lane urban road and in the future years, I know that we're going to expand the T. Ellis Road and other major routes on the west side and continue to add services to support these growing neighborhoods. Sioux Falls has rapidly expanded to the south as well. Our borders now reach 95th Street and we have developed major east and west routes like 69th and 85th Street. Major commercial centers have prospered and more should follow. It is critical that the city continue to work with the state and with federal partners to develop the area around 85th Street and Interstate 29. Only then can a potential medical research park and commercial development become a reality, bringing countless excellent jobs to our region. Like Highway 100, this is not simply a transportation project to improve the flow of traffic. It is an investment in economic development and it must be prioritized accordingly. While we should celebrate how our city has expanded, I'm most proud of how we've committed to redeveloping our downtown. Eight years ago, most people only had contact with downtown in a few blocks along Phillips Avenue. After dark, the only activity generally involved cruising on the loop. Today, we've shut the loop down and opened the downtown to a whole new population. You'll find live music, outdoor dining, public artwork, and new businesses opening every month. It has become a place where young and old come not just to work, but to live, to socialize, and to be entertained. Our taxable valuation downtown has grown from $125 million in 2002 to $229 million today. I truly believe that a city cannot be considered great unless its downtown is thriving. And in Sioux Falls, we can say exactly that. When we extended Phillips Avenue to Falls Park, we created a new neighborhood downtown called Uptown. The initial properties along Main Avenue are now redeveloped to offer loft living, restaurants, retail, and office. They are wonderful examples of the potential that exists with Uptown. And I truly hope that the next eight years will bring more development along Main and Phillips Avenue. The East Bank, that has been an exciting change for downtown. The art and the culture that has taken root here is so promising for our city. This year, we will construct a section of A Street. Besides replacing worn-out pavement, our new road will encourage more walking traffic toward the East Bank and connect even more people with this unique area of downtown. The East Bank will also be the first to benefit from our River Greenway project. In 2004, we developed a master plan for the Greenway. If we can find a way to complete that plan, Sioux Falls will see enormous benefit. We know that people love to be near water and we are so fortunate that the river runs all around our city, giving us many, many ways to develop around it. The first segment of the Greenway will be constructed this year between 6th and 8th Streets. I know you will start to see the potential in this urban river walk and I encourage you to keep moving forward with the rest of this master plan. It is so important that we take care of what we've been given in Sioux Falls. One way to do that is through our facade easement program. In the last eight years, we have helped restore 25 historic buildings to their original look. Not only does this improve the image of our downtown, but it preserves those important buildings for future generations. This effort has even served as a model for other cities nationwide and it has an impact economically. The value of those 25 properties before they were redeveloped was a combined $1.5 million. Today, the value of these properties is a combined $20 million. When cities grow, the temptation at times is to only focus on what's new. And what too often happens is that the inner part of a city suffers. In Sioux Falls, I have always believed that we have an obligation to preserve the quality of our core area. I don't think there should be any bad neighborhoods in Sioux Falls. And I believe that if you start at a household level, you can catch small issues before they spread and become big problems. Eight years ago, there was no citywide code enforcement effort. Today, we have added a code enforcement officer and our departments involved in enforcing city codes coordinate their activities on a regular basis. The result is that 86% of cases that come into compliance after receiving their initial notice, only 1.5% of cases receive three or more violations. And all other cases come into compliance with more minor citations. While enforcing code improvement properties, some neighborhoods need extra help to become strong. In 2006, we noticed an increase in police calls and code violations in Pettigrew Heights. First, our city departments came together and focused on stabilizing the neighborhood. Violent crimes went down. Properties were slowly improved. Then, private partners became involved. New housing projects have started and others are on the way. But more importantly, the people who live in Pettigrew Heights stepped forward and took ownership of their own neighborhood. They put their own projects together, helped one another on a personal level, and offered us suggestions of how to make the neighborhood even stronger. This is city government at its best. We recognize an issue. We brought the people together to fix it. And our own residents made it their own area and will ensure the neighborhood continues to move in the right direction. I am really proud of what we've done in Pettigrew Heights and I hope we have created a model that can be taken to other Sioux Falls neighborhoods. In the last eight years, the Department of Community Development has administered and supported many worthy housing projects for the benefit of our citizens and ultimately the city as a whole. We acquired and demolished 42 blighted houses and we constructed 76 new single-family homes to sell to income-qualified households. 362 homes were renovated to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing for income-qualified homeowners. Homeownership is a vital element of what keeps our neighborhoods stable and strong. Over the past eight years, 477 households were assisted in becoming first-time homeowners. In addition, 61% of the households assisted in 2009 purchased a home in the city's core area. The city's Community Development Department also received approximately $220,000 of stimulus funding in the fall of 2009. The federal government required these funds be used for job creation and energy efficiency. A new program called the Furnace Replacement Program was created to replace older inefficient furnaces in homes owned by income-qualified households. A total of 67 households have been assisted since September and jobs were created for local businesses. We also helped with rental housing. 200 units of affordable rental housing have been constructed or renovated. And 684 households were provided emergency rental assistance. In 2004, we also started a new service called Tenant Education and Self-Sufficiency Program. This program has helped 43 households who were on the verge of becoming homeless learn how to be good renters, give them skills for life that will help them keep the housing for years, years to come. And another important service we provide is public transportation. It used to be that people rode the bus because they had no other alternative. But today, we're also seeing a new generation of riders who want to ride the bus to improve the environment. We welcome more than ever the 1 million people that rode the bus last year. And in 2009, our transit system became known as Sioux Area Metro. And I hope more people will give it a try so that we can expand our routes and offer even better service. Downtown Sioux Falls has experienced many positive changes over the past eight years. As a result of the strong growth, we initiated a major parking study in 2007 to help us chart a course for the future to ensure that we continue to have ample parking to support the existing businesses as well as for future growth. Parking is a key part of downtown development and we must continue to provide affordable, accessible parking for our businesses and downtown residents and visitors. In the past eight years, Sioux Falls has added 390 new driving lane miles of road. Each lane has to be maintained, cleared of snow, and designed in a way that efficiently moves traffic. To give you a sense of our commitment to our streets, in 2002, our Street Maintenance Capital Improvement Program received $2.2 million. This year, we will commit $7.2 million to that same program. It has made and will continue to make a noticeable difference in the quality of our roads. We mainly fund our roads through a penny of the sales tax. Of that penny, 70% goes directly into improving our streets. This year alone, we will dedicate $33 million to road construction. This will impact 1,200 city blocks. We have also put a significant effort into tackling potholes. In the last few weeks, we have tripled the manpower on our streets to address potholes. We have made significant progress and I encourage our residents to continue to report spots so we can address them as quickly as possible. As the city grows, our transportation system needs to keep pace. We now have a method in place to combine city funds with developer fees to build major roads. A single mile of a major street costs $4 million. So it's important to share the costs among those who will benefit. We will also use these funds to expand current streets, helping to move traffic more safely and efficiently. When we asked our residents to rate how easy it is to get around the city, 62% said the ease of car travel is good or excellent. That is above the national average. 80% said our drinking water and sewer services are good or excellent, also above the national average. We are also making progress in how people perceive our streets. 32% said street repair is good or excellent, and that is a 7% jump in less than two years. In 2004, a record rain event hit Sioux Falls. We saw major flooding in several core neighborhoods and we came together to find a solution for the future. We completed 15 construction projects in neighborhoods from I-29 to I-29 and from Russell to 41st Street. These projects not only reduced the flooding risks, but they resulted in new streets and utility in many older neighborhoods. We all want our utilities to run seamlessly so that you don't even think about them. And I believe that our water, wastewater, lights, and landfill operate at a high level that provides excellent service to our citizens. In the last several years, we added 211 miles of water main and 146 miles of sanitary sewer. We have also put together long-term rate models so that we know we are only charging our customers what it costs to deliver these services. Our rate models are a responsible way to run these utilities and to plan for the future. And I really would like to thank our city council for supporting this approach. The future of our water supply is unquestionably tied to the Lewis and Clark Water Project. Eight years ago, people often asked me if that project would happen and how would we pay for it? Today, I am pleased to tell you we will have water from Lewis and Clark in Sioux Falls in two years. As you know, we have paid for it through adjusting our water rates over time to ease the impact on our residents. While this will supply Sioux Falls with up to 28 million gallons of additional water per day, we are currently expanding our own water plant to treat up to 70 million gallons today. This total water supply will continue to provide excellent service to our customers. And in 2008, we were recognized for having the third cleanest drinking water in the country by Forbes Magazine. This year, we will begin a significant replacement of our central main sewer line. This project will replace old unsound pipe and upsize it to meet our current and future needs. We have also made upgrades in our water reclamation facility. And in 2009, it was rerated from 13 And in two thousand nine, it was rerated from thirteen to twenty-one million gallons per day. This increase helps save the users of the system up to sixty million dollars in future expansion costs. Another facility I focused on improving was the regional landfill. And today, we have a modern, efficient landfill that is using green technology to save money and to improve the environment. We have added a household hazardous waste facility, electronic recycling, and a landfill gas collection system. A pipeline connecting the landfill to Poet's Chancellor Ethanol Plant allows us to sell methane gas to Poet. This allows us to reuse the methane and it generates revenue to keep fees low at the landfill. We know that public safety is extremely important to our residents and in the past eight years, we have made it a priority. We have strengthened our personnel, our programs, and our public information, and we believe we are leaving Sioux Falls a safer city today. In two thousand two, we had a hundred-and-eighty police officers. Today, we have two-hundred-and-thirty officers, including nine that were added this year through the federal stimulus dollars. Just as importantly, we have taken a look at how we schedule officers. Today, we have more officers on duty during times when more people are calling for police services. Not only does it make sense and give better service, but it maximizes our resources. In fact, we have experienced a reduction in our response time of a half-minute over the past year. In two thousand three, we opened our new law enforcement center, which has given our police some much-needed space. That bond will be paid off this year. We also added the gray bar storage building to give us more room to store evidence. And we've added many new quality programs to our policing efforts. We started a street crime unit to focus on gang activity and drugs. We made targeting methamphetamine a key initiative. And we partnered with area schools to raise awareness about the dangers of underage drinking. We have also taken a proactive approach to internet crimes against children. We have dedicated staff full-time to this statewide initiative. I am also very proud of how we have set high professional standards for our police department. We have wanted to promote a culture of integrity and excellent customer service. To give you an example of how we were succeeding, in two thousand nine, we responded to over eighty-one thousand calls for service and issued over thirty-eight thousand citations. With well over one-hundred thousand contacts, we received twenty formal complaints of officer wrongdoing. Of those twenty complaints, only one was sustained and the rest were either unfounded or the officer was exonerated of any wrongdoing. With the in-car camera system, all of our officer's contacts are recorded, which assists us greatly in investigating these complaints. Our residents tell us we're helping them feel safe. In last year's survey, ninety-five percent said they felt safe in their neighborhoods during the day. Seventy-eight percent feel safe at night. Both of these results are well above the national average. Moving forward, I am confident that our citywide staffing plan will address the ongoing need to add staff in all areas, including the police department. This is a valuable tool that emphasizes our city's priorities, but also takes into account the needs of all our city's services. I'm proud of the steps we've taken to address our public safety staffing and equally glad, equally glad to know that we are leading the city much stronger with a way to evaluate staffing in years ahead. Fire rescue has made great strides in the last eight years in becoming an accredited fire department. Out of thirty-two thousand departments nationwide, only one-hundred-and-thirty-four are accredited. This recognition speaks to the excellence of our department, and we are so fortunate to have the services of such a quality organization. We have added three new fire stations in the last eight years, along with thirty-five employees to staff them. These stations are in the southwest, northwest, and northeast. They have provided improved service to all of these neighborhoods. They have also allowed us to add additional services and programs like water rescue training and hazardous material response. It is so important to locate fire stations at a neighborhood level. It is, not only provides excellent response times, but gives residents a greater sense of security in our city. Another way we're bringing you even better service is by focusing on our firefighters' fitness. National statistics show that firefighters are at a high risk of line-of-duty death due to heart attack. Starting in two thousand eight, the department focused on improving firefighter fitness to lower that risk. As a result, our fitness improved dramatically. Our goal is to ensure that our firefighters have the aerobic endurance that is needed to effectively and safely fight fires. In two thousand seven, forty-nine percent met that standard. In two thousand nine, seventy-six percent met that standard, and our goal is to reach eighty percent this year and continue to improve. Our focus on improving your fire rescue service shows ninety-five percent of residents in our survey said fire services are good or excellent. Moving forward, I encourage you to continue to plan for the city's growth as it relates to new fire stations. It's important to monitor and adjust for growth to make sure that all residents enjoy first-class fire protection. We also want our residents to have access to affordable healthcare. In two thousand seven, we opened a new Falls Community Health Center. This brought us much-needed space and a better environment for our patients. We know that many people depend on these services for healthcare. In the last eight years, we have provided medical care to nearly sixty-three thousand patients and dental care to nineteen thousand patients. This represents a sixty-four percent increase in patients. We have also greatly improved our efficiency by converting to electronic medical records. Helping the homeless has been another focus of our health system. I truly believe that it takes multiple partners working together to support the needs of the homeless in our community. In the city, we currently direct more than six-hundred-thousand dollars in annual funding to support the needs of the homeless in our community, including healthcare, case management, and co-funding a homeless coordinator with Minnehaw County. I think the focus of our efforts wherever we, whenever we can help the less fortunate has to be to reducing the cycle of dependency in our community. We are very generous in Sioux Falls, but if we truly want to help people, our efforts must be centered on helping people help themselves. I am very proud of the partnership we have built with the Sioux Falls School District to offer healthcare for children. We now have clinics at Hawthorne and Terry Redlin Elementary Schools. This is a way to provide healthcare to children who might not otherwise see a doctor. Right at school, we can connect with them with routine physicals, vaccines, treatment for illness, lab tests, dental care, and follow-up care. It has been extremely successful and it has helped struggling, may help, helps children to become healthier. It has made them more productive students. And to date, we have served more than sixteen-hundred children in these clinics. The last several years have also brought diseases to our community that weren't thought of eight years ago. The first was the West Nile virus in Sioux Falls. We used to only spray for mosquitoes on the bike trail or before large events in our parks, but as we learned how mosquitoes carry disease, we significantly increased our spraying to encompass the entire city. We now closely monitor our mosquito population, trap and test for disease, and spray sewer outlets, ponds, and neighborhoods. The result has been a noticeable decrease in the disease. Recently, we also focused on H1N1 virus. Our health department led a regional effort to vaccinate, educate, and treat this emergency virus. In addition, health and risk management and many other departments have worked to establish the city's first emergency operations plan. And in two thousand six, we were recognized by the Department of Homeland Security as being one of the top six communities nationwide for emergency communications during a disaster. We have also focused on the overall health and wellness of our city employees. In two thousand seven, we hired a wellness coordinator and the benefits have really been significant. Three years ago, forty-six percent of our employees participated in a basic health screening offered by the city. By the end of last year, we were up to sixty-three percent participation. The results of these screenings have helped us focus our approach to health and wellness. We have had great success with weight loss, fitness, and nutrition programs. We are now moving forward with a coordinated effort to help our employees become tobacco-free. All of these efforts add up to reduce healthcare costs for the city and greatly help our workers be more productive. In Sioux Falls, we enjoy an excellent quality of life and much of it is due to our park system. Ninety-two percent of respondents to our survey told us the city parks are good or excellent. We also recently received an expert stamp of approval. Out of nine thousand park and rec agencies nationwide, only ninety are accredited, including our park and rec department. This places us in the top one percent of agencies nationwide. Our flagship park is one, our flagship Falls Park, I should say, is one reason why our park system is so strong. The last eight years have brought significant expansion of Falls Park to the west and to the north. We opened the Overlook Cafe, the open-air shelter for the farmer's market, and we've added trails and artwork throughout the park. We also became a popular, we also began a popular annual tradition each holiday season by lighting up the Falls for winter wonderland. And we invited the community to enjoy a citywide picnic and parade at the Falls each Fourth of July. The future of Falls Park is full of even more promise. I encourage you to all pursue the rest of the park's master plan and continue to develop this magnificent space. Just as Falls Park attracts tourists, our athletic complexes welcome visitors and residents alike. Since two thousand two, we have added Harmonon Park for baseball and softball. We renovated and expanded fields at Sherman and Yankton Trail. As a result of these complexes, we are now known as some of the best in the nation for these, these facilities. We partnered on Family Park, our first urban fishery. And on the Sanford Sports Complex, we developed a junior football fields and other youth sports. One of the most popular features of our park system is our bike trail. In the last several years, we completed paving the twenty-mile loop trail around our city. We added a connection on the west side and are planning for even more. And in two thousand nine, we were recognized for our commitment to cycling by being named a national bike-friendly community. It has been truly exciting to watch the growth in trail use, and as the numbers of people use the trail have doubled in the last ten years, it is something people look for in our city. And I hope Sioux Falls continues to be a leader in this effort. Neighborhood parks help connect residents to the unique areas of our city. We added four-hundred-and-ninety acres of parkland throughout Sioux Falls. We have also developed specialty parks like our Spencer Dog Park, Pioneer Spray Park, and our ADA Miracle Field. We have opened Veterans Memorial Park to honor our military heroes, and we completed a major project at McKennan Park. It is so important to continue to invest in our park system. More and more research suggests that we are on the right track with the goal to locate a park a half-mile from every home. Several studies have shown that people who live close to parks live a healthier life. Our parks system sets Sioux Falls apart from so many other communities and should be a point of pride for all of us. We also continuously see strong use in our community centers. In two thousand nine, more than two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand people used these neighborhood gathering places. In two thousand three, we added Morningside Community Center, and I'm sure future centers will continue to develop along with our new schools, parks, and neighborhoods. Trees greatly enhance the look of our community. In the last eight years, we have planted more than five-thousand trees in our park system. We have also worked with property owners to trim their trees. Every street tree in the city has been evaluated for compliance with our city laws. Keeping trees healthy and making streets and sidewalks safer. One of our greatest undertakings in the park system was improving the Great Plains Zoo. Many partners came together and today, we have a zoo that continues to add exhibits and attract visitors. The Asian cat and rhino exhibits are much more welcoming for visitors and the animals. And the children's zoo is now a place where kids can truly interact with animals and have a memorable time. The zoo will continue to grow this year with a focus on improving the entry plaza and the exhibits in that area, including the flamingos and the monkeys. And moving forward, the zoo's master plan will guide future development. Our library system has also seen positive changes in the last several years. It is so important to provide accessible library service at a neighborhood level to our residents, and we know they appreciate it. Eighty-seven percent of residents told us our library systems are good or excellent. Libraries also continue to evolve. They offer a huge range of materials, computer access, and educational opportunities for all ages. And as you'll see, Sioux Falls residents are taking advantage of it. Since two thousand two, our, our customer borrowing at Suleman Libraries has increased by forty percent. Our library visits have increased by thirty-four percent. And our computer use has grown by an amazing two-hundred-and-nine percent. We have also expanded our weekly hours of operation from three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-and-fifty-one. And our website has grown greatly to allow people to use library services without having to visit one of our buildings. In two thousand five, we opened the Oakview Library Branch on the east side. It's a beautiful fifteen-thousand-square-foot library with room for expansion, and it is very popular. In the last year, Oakview customers borrowed two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand items, and that is a fifteen percent increase. This year, we will start design of our next branch library on the west side, on the southwest corner of Memorial Park. This will be similar in size to Oakview and will serve a growing side very well. If we measured only the population that lives west of Interstate Twenty-Nine, those residents alone would be the third-largest city in the state. So we know there's a need for for additional services, and we're excited to open the new library for our west side For years, Sioux Falls tried to determine the future of its main library. The current building was too small and outdated. Now, in just a matter of weeks, we will unveil our newly renovated and expanded main library. I am especially pleased that we're able to preserve the current downtown location. Our main library will be a destination place for residents throughout our city, and it will be a wonderful facility for the growing number of people living and working downtown. The renovation will add eighteen thousand square feet and provide more room for patrons and programs. The whole building will take on a modern, more welcoming, with wonderful areas for reading, researching, and children's programs. I think you will be amazed at the transformation there. Projects and programs like the ones we looked at today do come in with a price, but I think it's important to look at how we're leaving the city in a very strong financial condition. Since two thousand and two, we have been authorized to spend eight hundred and one million dollars in our general operating budget. We have actually spent seven hundred and fifty million dollars. That's more than fifty million dollars less than we were authorized to spend. At times, there has been a perception that the city spends more than it actually takes in. As you can see, that is simply not the case. We have also paid strict attention to managing our reserve fund. In two thousand and two, the city had twenty-nine point five million dollars in reserves. With the council's support, we wisely used some of that over time to improve services, especially public safety and transportation. But today, we are leaving the next administration with more than forty-one million dollars in reserve. This is equal to thirty-three point five percent of our total operating budget, well above our target of twenty-five percent, and nearly the same percentage as we inherited when we took office. It is important to remember that reserves are there for a reason. They can be spent down in hard times or to add critical services so long as there is always a plan to keep that fund at a responsible level. Planning for changing financial conditions is essential for a well-run city. The last two years have brought many challenges for organizations nationwide, including cities. I'm so proud of how we've managed through the current economic recession and how we continue to make adjustments as conditions change. We have taken the approach that to plan, prepare, and prioritize is the best way we face this uncertainty, and I believe we have continued to provide excellent basic service in spite of spending holdbacks. Our department work as a team, and our city council has supported these efforts. Together, we will emerge from the recession with our core service intact with plans for an even better future. I always want our residents to remember what they're receiving in return for their investment in our city. As you can see here, a significant portion of your city budget goes to provide basic services. These are things like water, sewer, road maintenance, snow removal, and public safety. A much smaller portion goes to the cultural and recreation, which must be a part of the equation for a city to attract and retain residents. We also continue to pay off debt every year and maintain it at a responsible level. We have used debt only to manage large projects that serve as long-term investments for our community, things like the Lewis and Clark Water Pipeline and flood protection. We have always tried to provide the best information possible to our residents. Our CityLink Channel sixteen has grown enormously in the last eight years and offers valuable programs about our services every day. Our website, sioufals.org, received more than one point one million hits in two thousand and nine. We've also added many new features to the website and have expanded the city's presence in social media. As I leave office, the one project I wish I could say we've completed is a new event center. I just can't stress enough how important this facility is for the future of Sioux Falls. The competition for cities to attract new businesses and residents has never been greater, and we can't afford to put ourselves at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to our facilities. We are turning away events that want to come to Sioux Falls because we can't accommodate them in our fifty-year-old arena. We have major conventions that want to bring thousands of visitors to Sioux Falls, and we can't host them because our convention center isn't big enough. I know some people say this project isn't needed, or that it's too expensive, or that this isn't the right time. I just have to tell you that there is a price tag for doing nothing, and that price grows the longer we delay. Imagine if our major hospitals had decided years ago that they were big enough. They would have never built new state-of-the-art facilities. The jobs that came with them would not exist, and our residents would still be gone, out of state for many of their medical needs. If we did not find a way to grow our arena and convention center, we will lose more events. We will not add jobs in this industry, and we will give up additional fifty million dollars in economic impact to our city every single year. Plans for a new event center got as far as the state capital before they were stalled earlier this year, and they would not have made it nearly that far if not for one of the best groups of citizens I have ever met. I know that many of them are here with us today, and I really would like to personally thank our eighteen-member Events Center Task Force for the work that they did, and I really would like to recognize at this time the leadership of Terry Blune and Jim Wooster for what they did on that task force and what they really brought forward for the people to see. I truly believe that if a new event center is ever going to become a reality, that this group of people needs to help lead the effort. They represent all walks of life in Sioux Falls, and they do their work with the best interests of our city at heart. I continue to support their recommendations and their belief that we should fund this project in as short a period of time as possible and avoid as much debt as we can. I also want to recognize the ninety-five other South Dakota communities that stood with Sioux Falls to support a temporary sales tax for city projects like this one. Their needs are just as great as our needs, and I truly hope the state will recognize these needs in the years ahead and will give our citizens a chance to decide if these projects are worthy of their support. Economic growth benefits all of us. It doesn't matter whether you're working on major projects or just administering the day-to-day work of a city. A leader can't be effective unless the organizations work together. In Sioux Falls, our former government is still quite young, and while there will always be challenges in the business of government, I am very proud of how so many of us have worked together. As I look at our city council members, I am very grateful that so many of you throughout my years have been willing to work with me and my staff to provide excellent programs and services to the citizens of Sioux Falls. As I've told many of you, I don't believe politics belongs in local government. I know many of you agree, and I believe our residents do too. Local government is about strengthening cities and supporting citizens, and with your help, I truly believe we have done both. Serving as mayor has been one of the most enjoyable, rewarding things that I have ever done, but I didn't do it alone. Most people have no idea the amount of work that goes on day in and day out to keep the city running and to help it become even better. I am so grateful to the mayor's office staff and our city directors for the exceptional work that they have done, not just for me, but for all of you. Unless you have had the opportunity to sit in my office, you don't know how important that service really is, but I can tell you this: It has made all the difference in the world for me. The success that we've achieved is due in no small part to the excellence of our city employees. More than eleven hundred people work for the city of Sioux Falls, and no matter what their role, they deliver first-class service, and I am proud to be working alongside of them. It's no secret that I truly love Sioux Falls. It has been my guiding principle for eight years. Every decision, no matter how big or how small, has been rooted in my belief in what is best for our wonderful city. Sioux Falls has the promise of an even brighter future, and if we always remember that what is best for Sioux Falls is ultimately best for all of us, we will continue to leave this city better than we found it, and thank you all very much for being here. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I really do truly appreciate it, and I appreciate everyone in this room, what you have all done to help make this city great, because its days are glorious going forward. So it's been a great privilege for me to work with each and every one of you, and it's something I'll always remember. Thank you very much.[1790.24][1790.24][applause]